Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Will everyone please stand? Silent prayer, a moment of reflection.
Before we do that, I'd like to unfortunately say this past week in Asbury Park is not a good week. We lost three of you on Friday. Nineteen-year-old Dario Vernet was a victim of homicide in the city. And on Sunday, there was a terrible car crash on the Parkway where Dietriona Young, age 26, and Janaya Rudolph, age 24, Asbury Park residents, lost their lives. So this was not a happy week for Asbury Park. And so this moment of silence, I hope everybody would wish good things for the Young, Rudolph, and the Vernet family. Thank you.
We will now salute the flag, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 7, 2022, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present a proclamation recognizing Pastor Jean Guy Florville.
Pastor Florville, well-respected figure in the Haitian community, became pastor of the first French-speaking Baptist church on November 16, 1975. And whereas, under Pastor Florville's guidance, the ministry grew from 400 members to 200 members in 1999, which required them to purchase a new property at 412 Asbury Avenue in Asbury Park, New Jersey. Over the past 30 years, the church had officially grown to over 500 members. His ministry spans over 47 years in Asbury Park, where he has performed campus weddings, baby dedications, funeral, visitations of sick members, and other festoral services. He serves as the president of the Haitian Baptist Church's organization in New York, New Jersey. And in 2010, Pastor Florville was the recipient of the Asbury Park Mayor's Ball Michael Brim Humanitarian Award for his tireless efforts to bring together the community of Asbury Park. He serves as executive director of the Good News Radio Station, single-handedly instrumental in bringing the Good News Radio Station to Asbury Park. Mayor Moore and Asbury Park City Council do hereby acknowledge and thank Pastor Florville for his perfect commitment to impact our community for the better. Here, be it resolved, the mayor and council congratulate Pastor Florville on 47 years of devoted service and wish him the very best in his future endeavors. Do you want to say a couple words too about the pastor? Well, you know, you're on the spot. And anyone who's part of this church, if they want to come up?
Please.
No, come, come, come.
Family, church members, please come up.
Come up, come up. You got to come up. Come up, come up, come up. Anybody who wants to say a couple words as well?
Somebody.
Okay, so.
Um, I didn't let in, as you guys know, I was raised in the first French-speaking Baptist church when it was on Asbury Avenue down towards the edge of the city. I used to sing. I participated in places. And Pastor Florville has always been a strong leader of the church in the Galatians and Haitian community. I just wanted to thank him for all his service, many, many years. And I just, I know that his work will continue on. Thank you.
Is there anything else I can say? A couple words? Do you want to say a couple words?
So, okay. Yes, I'm here to thank the city council for making this event possible tonight. So to honor Pastor Florville. Yes, yes, it showed that you acknowledge value in your community. There is a saying that says value recognize value. And this is who you are. So there is a, there is another who says success is not about a wealth you have. Success is about the difference you make and love and what the people like. So you know Pastor Florville as a quiet and peaceful man of God. Yes, so he is not just that. He tries to spread all around us and make it family a very peaceful and quiet like he is. So I don't think I am trying to say so too much about Pastor Florville. All I can say, I said I'm proud to have Pastor Florville as my pastor.
Thank you.
Yes. Just one? Do you want to pen? Do you want me to take a picture with both of you?
We're now on to special events applications.
The first two applications before you have already occurred but still need to be approved. The first one is for the Eid prayer, which happened on July 9. Second is for the Bands Off Our Body protest on July 9. The last two applications, National Night Out on August 2 in Springwood Park and March for Our Lives on July 15 in Springwood Park. Are there any questions?
No, but Lisa, a few people asked me when National Night Out is. I wonder if we could get that on the electronic sign on Springwood?
Sure.
Thanks.
First Tuesday in November, not in August.
Yes.
Yep.
Anybody that came for the presentation, the proclamation for Pastor Florial, don't feel like you have to stay because now it's the boring part. So if you want to get up and leave, you're, okay, if you want to stay, fantastic. But if you want to go, he was smart, he left.
We're now on to matters from city council.
So I'd just like to remind everyone that the Music Monday concerts in Springwood Park are taking place every Monday evening from 6 to 8. This week, there'll be Ray Goodman and Brown from Asbury Park. Their band Moment of Truth was one of the first recording artists here. And then I'd like to remind everybody about the participatory budgeting ideas. People are submitting ideas via our website to improve or bring some ideas to the city, some ideas about, you know, what you'd like to see on city-owned properties. So the deadline's July 31. So please get your submissions in. We've got about 40 of them thus far, and some of them are pretty exciting. So please continue to send your submissions. And that's it.
Me? Okay. I just wanted to remind everyone that the Quality of Life Committee and the Public Works Department are sponsoring Asbury Park Summer Spruce Up. And that means that there are going to be dumpsters placed strategically throughout the city. And the next time that the dumpster is going to be located is July 16 and 17, and it's going to be on Avenue A south of Springwood. And the following weekend is July 23 and 24, be located on Bond Street between Sunset and Fifth Avenue. And it's only for residents, not for construction companies or landscapers, but any kind of household goods. The only thing you cannot put in are toxic substances and electronics. Everything else can go into the dumpster. So please take advantage of this opportunity. Thank you.
There's no comment at this time.
Thank you.
I'm just going to reiterate what John Moore says, our heartfelt condolences to the families that he mentioned this, the beginning of our meeting.
The only thing I have, Friday evening, I'm not sure of the time, I think it's 4:00. Edgia Watts, local student from Asbury Park, is having a March for Our Lives at Springwood Avenue Park. And this is about the gun violence in America and, you know, not just New Jersey, but throughout America. Again, she's been working hard to get this off the ground. So if anybody can make it Friday, late afternoon, it's up on our website what time it is, I'm not sure. I think it's 4. But if anybody can attend, I should be deeply appreciative. Thank you.
Matters from the city manager?
I have nothing, Lisa.
Thanks. Matters from the city attorney?
I have nothing at this time either.
Okay. We're now on to public participation portion of the meeting. Public participation portion is now open. Any member, oh, I'm sorry. May I have a motion to go into public?
It's okay.
Thank you. Public participation portion is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker.
Hello, mayor, council, city manager, attorney. Good to see you all again. It's been a while. Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue, city historian. I've come tonight because I saw two items on the agenda that are of great concern to me. One, during your executive session, it listed contract negotiations for an easement for retaining wall. The other is a resolution to be discussed later or voted on later, Resolution 328, granting a use license also for encroachment on public right-of-way. The most historic and significant architectural feature of Asbury Park is its public lands. And a municipal council is measured by how it protects those public lands. Part of your charge as city officials is to represent, protect, and preserve public assets, like public property. It's completely inappropriate to be giving easements and encroachments and use licenses away that do not benefit the public. There are certain exemptions that could be considered, like a handicapped access ramp or a geographical problem with the lay of the land, which might justify giving private property owners access and exclusive use of public property. But just for aesthetics or for a mistake in judgment is certainly not a legitimate reason. Property owners, when they buy a property, they get a survey. They know what their property boundaries are. They should not be rewarded for stealing public property and building things on it that they have no right to build. Now, as far as the resolution specifically, it is technically flawed. The resolution that you're considering, 328, the property described there does not even exist. The address does not coincide with the street bounds. There's no survey attached. There's no meets and bounds described. And furthermore, it's in the waterfront redevelopment area. By giving away public property for a couple of feet of fence subverts the entire concept of the unified streetscape of the waterfront redevelopment area. These are the kinds of things you need to consider, not just because somebody puts something there and it's already there and you might as well let them keep it. There's a bigger picture. There's the overall context of the design of the streets, protecting public lands, and not rewarding people for taking advantage of those public lands. So I urge you to do the right thing and get rid of that resolution off the agenda. It's technically flawed, for one thing, and doesn't have all the proper elements, Stephen, consider it at this point. And as far as your discussions in executive session, I hope you take my comments into consideration.
Thank you. The one resolution on the other side of the town is being pulled from the agenda, but not because of the reasons you mentioned. We did not have enough time to talk about it in the executive.
We never placed it on the agenda.
Oh, is there a place on the agenda?
We just discussed it in executive. So just the 502 is on the agenda.
Okay. Read them around 08th Avenue, along the same lines as Werna. You also have another responsibility for making sure that the zoning, planning, and all that is in order, which it isn't. Next door to me, 506 8th Avenue, they've had six-foot hedges since 2019, I think. Might be like 2019. They got an official letter from one of the public officials in the city, a zoning officer, telling them to cut them down to 30 inches because they're on public property to begin with. And it's now 2022, and nobody has paid attention to that. Then we've had two more zoning officers since then. Now, the Tides Hotel, they also put up those hedges on public property. And there's nobody, I mean, like, I don't know who you would call. Nobody answers the phone, for one thing. And the other thing is about public property or parks. When you're going to have a rally, I just reviewed your application for the rally you had last week, which you're voting on tonight. What is that, past tense? I mean, how do you vote on something that's already happened? And it's the same thing with the bill resolution. You cut the checks, you wait till you say yes, and then you send them out. Nobody says no. Well, John, no, he says no. But I'm just saying, how is this city running? You have a rally at the park, public park, no deposit, no insurance, and you read it, and it says you must have $500 down. It's refundable. Yeah. No cops, or did they have cops? Who's paying for all this? It's not fair. And to think that one councilperson has her address on the application is, I mean, I don't know if that's even legal, that a councilperson gets involved in something like that. She should have had somebody else's name on there. It's not right. That's really a violation. It's malfeasance in office when you have an event and you don't pay for it. Nobody paid for it. There's about three or four. You should look over the special events committee and fire every one of them, and also the TRC, because nothing is getting done. Nothing. The TRC is damaging the whole town. And the special events, they didn't even approve these things. This last event wasn't even approved. And the same thing happened two years ago with the preacher. Same exact thing. The poor preacher. He was here for a week giving out presents and everything, and you, you just ground them out. Now, you know, something's got to be done with the hedges and how you do the special event. That's a disgrace. We should be making money, not losing.
Okay, Rita, your time's up.
Okay.
With the hedges, I'm going to ask the city manager to look into that, and she'll get in touch with you. I know the one you're talking about, yours, does go back many years, and that's something we can talk to the courts to move up. I mean, everything got closed down because of COVID. So the courts are finally getting open again. And as far as the event at Springwood Avenue Park, you're right, we're voting after the fact. Sometimes that happens. That happens sometimes in every town and every county and every state. And, you know, but all fees were paid in full. Police, park, application, everything. All fees, insurance, everything were paid in full. So wherever you get the information, they weren't paid.
Didn't come with it. I got the application. There was no insurance.
Okay, I don't know what you got. All fees were paid in full.
Well, can I see those payments?
So I got to clarify on that. I paid all of the application fees. I paid to rent the park. I paid for two police off, hold on, Rita, let me at least say, the police department told me two police officers. They'll send me a bill. I had insurance. So we put two deposits down, insurance, and we hired two cops, and I paid to rent the park. So I just want to be very clear. I don't have a bill from, I don't want John to miss stay. I do not have a bill from the police. I hired two police officers. When they send me the bill, I'll happily pay it. And I also hired a DPW worker to open the bathrooms and take out the garbage. Just want to be crystal clear on that.
Well, be crystal clear on the application, that. It's scribbled. You can hardly read it. Maybe you should have it printed.
Your time is up, Rita. Please sit down.
Nobody can read that.
Motion to close?
Move to close.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion is now closed. We're now on to the minutes. I have the executive meeting minutes and the regular meeting minutes of June 22, 2022. Councilmember Chapman will be abstaining from the regular meeting minutes of June 22, 2022. Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
So I'm voting on the one set of minutes.
The executive. Correct. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to city council and will be considered with, for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent tonight, we have Resolutions 2022, 2018 through 2022, 321, and Resolution 2022, 335, which is a resolution appointing Amanda Yellner to the mayor's wellness committee with the term expiring on December 31, 2022. Do I have a motion for consent?
I would recommend that you pull Resolution Number 318 from the consent agenda.
I was just going to abstain from them all, Fred, and then I just thought that would be easier.
That's fine.
Okay.
Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Abstain.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. We're now on to individual resolutions. I have Resolution 2022, 322, a resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 2022, 323, a resolution authorizing purchase of body armor vests for the police department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2022, 324, a resolution authorizing the repairs of the fire alarm at the sewer plant.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2022, 325, a resolution authorizing the repairs to the 2016 Ford Explorer utility police interceptor vehicle.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2022, 326, a resolution authorizing the installation of the new generator at the wastewater treatment plant.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2022, 327, a resolution authorizing air duct cleaning at City Hall.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2022, 328, a resolution authorizing the city of Asbury Park to execute a license agreement to permit a limited encroachment into the right-of-way area adjacent to the property located at 502 Grand Avenue, Block 3209, Lot 1, relating to an existing fence along Sewell Avenue.
Move it.
328.
328.
Motion. I just need a second.
I'll second it. I have a question.
Go ahead.
So Fred, you heard Mr. Baumgartner's suggestion, like, it wasn't worded correctly with bounds and meets and everything. Does that make a difference?
Well, first, I believe Mr. Baumgartner referred to the address. I know whenever there's a request of this nature for a specific address, we always check the property data, information through the Monmouth County Board of Taxation to ensure that we have the correct street address and block and lot. And I'm sure we must have done that with regard to this matter because we reference a specific block and lot and an address of 502 Grand Avenue. It's a policy call from the council as to whether you want to allow an existing encroachment. The fence has been in existence for some period of time. As to the fact that there's no survey or plan attached, the license agreement is revocable at the will of the city. At any point in time, the city can revoke this. This is not a permanent encroachment in the sense that an easement is, that gets recorded with the Monmouth County Clerk's Office. Any easement that is granted requires that we have a legal description and a plan attached. I didn't, it would require escrow from the applicant to post to cover the fees and costs associated with that, to submit a legal description to attach. We certainly could attach it, but given the ephemeral and presumably temporary and revocable nature of this type of an agreement, we didn't feel that was necessary. But if council wants to require it, then we can go back to the applicant and tell him he's got to post escrow and have a legal description done.
And Mayor, I can confirm that the block and lot are correct. I'm looking at the tax map right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You can't talk.
Sorry.
The, I think the reference to Sewell Avenue is the fact that the fence runs along Sewell Avenue. And that's the encroachment that's
It's on Monroe.
All right.
It's just the summary is wrong.
Okay. So if that's the case, then apologies for that typo. You can make a motion to amend the resolution so that it reflects Monroe rather than Sewell.
It's the description on the resolution should say along Monroe Avenue, not Sewell Avenue. The block and lot, though, are correct.
But it's also in the
Yeah, in the body of the resolution, there's a reference to it. So any references to Sewell will be changed to Monroe. We just need to have a motion to amend the resolution to reflect that change.
Motion to amend?
Motion to amend.
Second?
Right. Second.
Thank you.
And then all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So the resolution now has been amended to reflect Monroe as where the fence is situated as opposed to Sewell. And now the resolution as amended is before you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt the amended version of this resolution?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.